The school board meeting is called to order. Will you please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams. Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Paul.
Here.
And Mrs. Presia.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffeler, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. May I get a motion to approve the public meeting agenda?
Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to move that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Paul, second by Vice Chair Stevens at the school board. The City of Manassas approved the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. We don't have any spotlights this evening, and I'm going to go straight to board committee reports. Mrs., Vice Chair Stevens, Policy Committee.
Today, the Policy Committee met and looked at and discussed fifty-two VSBA policy updates. Five were reviewed by the VSBA but were not revised. Of those five, one will be revised by MCPS as it is an outdated version of the policy. Of the policies reviewed today, thirteen are policies previously modified by MCPS. We did not recommend additionally modifying any policies today. The committee did recommend revising a modified policy to bring it in line with the VSBA. The policy in question was BCF dash M Advisory Committees to the School Board. As a modified policy, it did not list the specific committees. To be in line with the VSBA, once adopted, it will list all the standing committees and advisory councils within the division. Our modified policies are specific to our population and better support our students and community than the model policies. A few examples include policy EFB dash M Food Surfaces and how the division handles meal debts. The modification at MCPS specifically states that no child will be denied a school meal because of an outstanding lunch debt. An additional policy that is modified by MCPS, policy GCD dash DA dash M Effective Criminal Conviction or Founded Complaint of Child Abuse or Neglect, was modified by VSBA, and this is actually quite some time ago, to state that all employees are required to undergo background checks every three years. VSBA and Virginia legislation only require a background check at the time of employment. Thirty policies were updated to reflect addition of language related to new legislation, twenty-five for state legislation, five for federal legislation. I do want to note that in many circumstances, one or another piece of legislation was applicable to multiple policies. A few of the standouts were based on legislation regarding the ban of TikTok and WeChat on school-issue devices for students and staff, the requirement that staff be trained in the science of research-based learning instruction, and the requirement on notification within twenty-four hours of an incidence of student bullying. At our next school board meeting, the last Tuesday in July, the policy documents will be on the discussion agenda. And then the following meeting, they'll be on the action agenda for voting.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens. Before we go on to citizens' comments, I want to recognize Councilwoman Sonia Vazquez-Luna and the audience with us tonight. Thank you for being here. And at this time, we will ask for citizens' comments. Is there anybody signed up to speak? Is there anybody that would like to speak at all? Okay. Next up is our consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please? Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve consent agenda as written.
As modified.
As modified.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Paul, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the consent agenda for the school board of the City of Manassas be approved, as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries six zero. Moving right along. On our discussion agenda this evening is the Student Code of Conduct. And with us tonight is Ms. Jackie Sott, Student Services Coordinator, who will be discussing the proposed Student Code of Conduct for the 2023-24 school year. Mrs. Sott.
Jackie. You might have to get closer.
Move it closer. It's better.
Can you hear? It's not even beyond. I think, I don't think it's on.
Al's coming to the rescue.
How about now?
Yes.
That's really loud.
Yes. Thank you, Al.
All right. As mentioned, we are here to discuss the twenty-three, 2023-24 Student Code of Conduct. We review the Student Code of Conduct every year to align the Code of Conduct with any legislative changes that have been put forward through VDOE. At this time, no new changes have led to anything that we need to update in the Student Code of Conduct for the coming year.
Thank you. And I know that traditionally, if there were bigger changes, that it would traditionally go through the academic committee for review and then come to the full school board. But since we didn't, then...
Correct. There has been no legislation that required us to complete any sort of update.
Very good. Thanks. Any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Paul?
I just wanted to make sure that we have a process for reviewing the Code of Conduct, and it's a repeatable process at each school, so that, I guess, you know, principal, what I had asked earlier, that Mr. Gaffeler, I thought Mr. Gaffeler was going to jump up and go down there and answer questions. But just, is it a repeatable process that we're expecting each principal to go over the Code of Conduct so that the teachers know that they can use that as, you know, a tool? And laying down the law, if you will, at the beginning of the school year?
I'm sure it is. I complete a Student Services annual training to all of the administrators to inform them of any changes that may take place.
Okay.
But with regards to what they do with their student population, I'm sure that's a part of it, that they do review it annually.
Okay. Okay. I really think that's it. I just wanted to make sure that the teachers just kind of were encouraged to brush up on everything so that they could use what's in the Code of Conduct at the beginning of the school year in particular, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page and that they knew they had, you know, something in writing to back up the things that they're trying to enforce.
Sure.
Thank you.
Very good. Vice Chair Stevens?
Just one quick question. There's new legislation that requires parents be notified within twenty-four hours of an incidence of bullying. Is that something that should be addressed in the Student Code of Conduct? Or is that something that we're okay with it being policy and written into regulation?
It is a notification bill, so therefore it is part, will be updated in our appropriate school board policy, which is JBHA dash JGBA.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Presia.
Hello. So I do have a few questions. And we have, so this is the Student Code of Conduct. This is a legal document that reflects legislation that comes, and directives that come from VDOE.
Correct.
But we also have student handbooks, which are developed by principals? Or is there another process?
No, I think, I believe they're developed by the administrative teams at each building and then approved by the principal.
I see. Okay. So the Student Code of Conduct sets the, basically the state minimum standards, and then the principals can make, can make, you know, adjustments to their, you know, appropriate to their building.
The Code of Conduct is the division-wide guide for disciplinary practices. So although a student handbook may reference a discipline practice, it cannot, it cannot do more than the Code of Conduct has sort of set. For example, there's, you know, certain violations would require a mandatory ten-day suspension, for example. For that particular infraction, a school cannot go beneath that.
Gotcha. Do we find this current iteration sufficient to our disciplinary needs?
I'm not sure I understand.
I mean, is our, do our administrators, do our teachers, do they feel like they have enough, you know? Is there a process for soliciting feedback from the people who have to be on the ground administering that discipline? Is this sufficient to deal with the behaviors that we are seeing in our schools?
I'm not sure that I would be the person to answer that. I think that that feedback would need to come probably from the building principals.
I see. So I definitely, you know, I want to stay inside the lines, but there were several things that struck me reading the content of the Code of Conduct. You have, for example, the dress code. It explicitly calls out midriffs, that midriff should not be shown at any point in a, you know, at school. However, walking through the school on any given day, you see quite a bit of crop tops. And so, I mean, this is a, maybe not even necessarily something that you should, you know, be prepared to answer, but maybe something that we as a board should discuss under this topic. You know, are we comfortable having an item on the Code of Conduct that's not being enforced? And should we suggest an edit in that?
Do you have an instance you want to report or you want to discuss with the principal? Because, I mean, tonight on the agenda is the Code of Conduct.
Right. And the Code of Conduct says that midriffs in all circumstances should not be shown in class or on school property, but that is very clearly not, you know, it's very clearly not being enforced. And so it is, you know, this is, this is our document at this point. You know, this is something that we can offer edits if we want to. And I just want to discuss it. That's all. I don't know that I necessarily have the answer to it, you know? There is a, I looked up the Prince William County Code of Conduct, and they do not mention midriffs at all. They just say the building principal has the ultimate authority to determine respectful dress, and it is on the students to make, you know, to dress appropriately. I mean, I can pull it up. I've got it there saved.
So what is it that you would like to discuss?
I would like to discuss if we'd like to do something like that instead. If we would like to signal our, if we would like to signal our desire that the dress code be more consistently enforced in our buildings? Or perhaps this is best referred to the academic committee for further development.
So is this something, let me just get closer. Is this something that we want building administrators to come up with, for lack of a better term, a consequence for violations in the, in the dress code? Or do we want, are we talking, we want a universal consequence that's applied across all schools?
Well, that's what, you know, this is the universal consequence book, right? Like, this is what we are expecting out of everybody.
Right. It's what we expect, but it doesn't give specifically a consequence. And I don't know if you can answer that question. That may be something that's a building administrator question on how violations of the dress code are handled, because it wouldn't just apply to midriffs. It would apply to other things like sexually explicit obscene derogatory language or images on clothing. So is there kind of like a go-to consequence or action that school admin?
As it's written in the Code of Conduct, there's not a specific consequence.
Okay.
It basically says that the administrator would address the matter and handle it as they see fit.
Okay. So it could be something where the administrator maybe sees an uncovered stomach and says, "Cover it," and it gets covered. And then when the administrator walks away, it gets uncovered. Because our teenagers are really smart.
Right.
And sometimes they know how to outsmart us, and sometimes they know where in the halls the administrators are going to be. So, you know.
Mrs. Paul?
I think to Ms. Presia's point, if we're finding that we're never going to enforce a particular piece of code, you know, we might question why it's there at all. But I also can, can see where having it written and having a choice whether to enforce it, you know, is not making a drastic move. But I also think that if we're going to have a lot of people come and keep pointing to it, and then, and then the opposite happening, it may be something that's worth consideration. Is it something, from my perspective, that should go to academic review, policy committee?
Academic committee is usually one that reviews Code of Conduct prior to full board seeing it. Is that something, you have an appetite to revisit this in academic committee? I can take a show of hands from the school board that is here now. Show of hands if you would like to revisit to discuss in more depth the dress code. I have one member.
I don't think it's a hill that I'm willing to die on, but, you know, I can see the validity of the point that it's... I mean, I can, I'm sorry. Sorry, I got a smudge on my glasses. You know, it's something that can be discussed, but as far as a top priority, it's, I don't have an opinion either way. Discussion doesn't mean, necessarily mean any changes. Discussion just means change, I'm sorry.
Ms. Presia has asked for discussion.
Yeah. Further discussion.
I will also note, if, if the academic committee does take this up, you know, currently the electronic equipment, cell phone, and communication device policy does not include any mention of AirPods, AirBuds, or headphones. I think that might be worthy of consideration. Our cheating and plagiarism section doesn't have any separate discussion of ChatGPT or other AI-generated essay writers. So I think that might be worth exploring. And, you know, the dress code, you know, midriffs, putting that aside, it also does not mention hats, hoodies, or non-medical face coverings, which I think might be something that would be, you know, worth exploring. So I think that there is multiple angles for the academic committee to take up.
Okay. So I have dress code, AirBuds, AirPods, and headphones, and AI. Did I miss something? Chat, ChatGPT, AI, she said. So, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the Code of Conduct being a public-facing document that we're putting out, it's good, it's good to have, you know, our best foot forward and make sure that what we say is what we mean. I think it's good. I would vote.
So do we have majority board support to send this to academic committee for further review? Raise a hand. Okay.
I make a motion to refer to academic committee. Is that the mechanism?
Show of hands? I think we have a majority show of hands. That'd be fine. We'll do that. Mr. Hollingsworth, you'll work with Alba and your committee to schedule that at your convenience. Got you. All right. Any other further comments or questions about the Code of Conduct? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Dr. Sott. Ms. Sott. Okay. Thank you for the presentation and for your work with us and with our students and all that you do. It's really appreciated because, you know...
Thanks so much.
Take care of our kiddos. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And Mrs. Sott, I wanted to also acknowledge your work on this, because I have seen from over the years how much it has developed and how much better it is. And I really thank you for your work. Is there anybody else we should acknowledge for this, this evening?
Well, our Spanish version is translated by Anna Castrina.
Wonderful.
She does an amazing job with that.
That's great. Well, thank you very much for your presentation this evening and for providing this for us for review. And I guess Alba will be in contact with you if we want to be a part of the academic committee discussion.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Next up is board member comments. First up is, right? Mrs. Presia.
Thank you, Chair Seberg. I have three comments to make tonight. My first comment is I want to preview for the community and my fellow assembled board colleagues here that I have made a formal request to the governance team to add two separate but related items to our next meeting's agenda regarding our grading policy. I would like to use this first comment to briefly outline what I'm proposing. First, I would like us to consider forming a special advisory commission with the explicit purpose of exploring the various options for updating our policy. I would like this commission to present us with a range of options for us to consider. Grading policies are not black and white. There are many variables that can be considered, many forms this can take. It is my goal for such a commission to be truly balanced with multiple perspectives and stakeholders to create community buy-in and investment in this conversation. It is my hope that a vigorous community process will result in a robust and long-lasting compromise.
May I interject here? I did want to clarify that we do committees, not commissions. And just because you've requested it does not mean that we'll be a part of the agenda. If it is the will of the board, we can have it on the next agenda. Can I have a show of hands who would like to see the advisory committee?
Yes.
On the next agenda, an advisory committee to discuss grading policy?
I do have to make a point of order here. I don't know that, I believe that would be a motion that would need to be seconded.
Okay. We can take care of it after. I just wanted to correct you on it. It's not a commission, it's a committee.
Okay.
And just because you've requested it does not mean it's going to make it happen.
No, indeed. I'm putting it out there for everybody.
So, quick question, and this is for clarification purposes. The development or creation of a committee to address policies, is that something that should be addressed first in the policy committee or by the board?
And that is what I've asked Mrs. Presia to do, to work with you to have it.
I mean, I believe my request is two parts, and one is definitely a policy. You know, I haven't gotten to that part yet. The advisory committee, I believe, is something that is in front of the whole board. The whole board makes that decision. And, you know, all I'm asking for is a conversation here. And if I'm permitted to make the rest of my comment, I hope I can convince you of that.
Do you want to make the rest of your comment before discussion? A show of who's interested or not?
I mean, I think, you know, when I have reviewed our board protocols, any member may review, may request, which I'm doing now, but I did not see anything in there regarding a majority vote. If I, obviously, if I sat here, you know, during our approval of the public meeting agenda and made a motion to add then, of course, I would need a majority vote to update the agenda at that point. But, you know, I do believe it is a prerogative of a board member to make that request, and we have nothing currently in our board protocols outlining the fact that it needs a majority vote at this point.
No, well, I was just asking if you, because you said you wanted to share some information that might change board opinion on whether to vote in favor of or not. And I wanted to know, gee, you want to share that information?
I would like to share that information. Yeah. So that's part one. That's the least controversial thing. I would like to have a special advisory commission made up of members of this committee, made up of, you know, multiple stakeholders with multiple perspectives so that we can achieve some measure of peace on this question. The second request that I have, while we wait for the commission to do its work, I would like us to consider reverting back to our pre-pandemic rating policy for the 23-24 school year to miss Stevenson's, Stevenson, I'm so sorry, Stevens's point. This is something that is, you know, according to our norms, generally put through the policy committee first, which I'm happy to do. I anticipate it would be a short meeting. We already have the policy saved in board docs, and the particular committee has already, I just think it would be a short discussion. But anyway, I make this request on the basis that the COVID emergency has passed, and while the previous policy was not perfect, it was much less controversial within the community, and I think it would be a better starting point if we were to launch this community process. Now, you know, there's some ongoing discussion regarding these, you know, some procedural hurdles to these requests. I am the newest member, and I'm happy to, you know, amicably, cheerfully, and productively work with my colleagues to overcome them. I do owe you an apology, Ms. Stevens. I did mean to CC you on my email to, or, you know, forward you. I don't want to break the meeting rules. So I did mean to include you on the correspondence with Chair Seberg last night, and that was just an oversight. I'm very sorry. I am fully respectful of your role as the policy committee chair and, of course, the vice chair of the school board. And I would like to use my second comment to take the opportunity to clarify my intentions. You know, I'm just a mom who wants what's best for kids. That's all. I want peace. I want us to work together to figure out what that is. And I know that's why we are all here. I want us to come up with something sustainable and suitable for the entire community. I believe in us. I believe in Manassas City. We are not like our neighbors. I think that's good. I have no desire to bring the Loudoun County clown show into Manassas City. Absolutely not. I think this is something special and wonderful about us, that we have this small community that we can engage with in good, in good faith. You know, I, the truth is, is that this grading policy, it's a problem for me, and I'm not going to stop talking about it until we all talk about it. And it's not just me. There are many people in the community who also have a problem with it. I think we can do better, even if no one gets 100% of what they want. I don't expect to go through this process and get my dream grading policy. You know, I believe in a process where we can find, like I said, some peace. And as I said to Ms. Seberg, Chair Seberg, earlier today, you know, I don't know if these items are going to pass. I don't think that should necessarily even be the threshold for putting something onto the agenda. I acknowledge that it's not up to me. You know, this is a seven-member school board, and I really respect my colleagues, and I've really gotten a chance to get to know each of you. And I've really valued that time in getting to know where each of you come from. So I respect the authority of the board of the whole. All I am asking for is a conversation. That's all I want. And finally, I would like to use my third comment to invite any citizens who are watching, who would like to be a part of this, to please take advantage of our citizen comment time at our next regular meeting, Tuesday, July 25th, at 6:00 PM, right here in the Gene Dean Auditorium. Regardless if it's on the agenda or not, I think it would be good to hear from people. You may also email us at school underscore board at mcpsova.org. That's all for me.
Mrs. Paul?
Turn your mic on.
Okay. I just have one thing. I don't know if it's premature. Ms. Taylor can start shaking her head no, but I'm happy to report that the Airport CTE Commission has met and is executing exciting airport opportunities in collaboration with Prince William, Manassas Park, Manassas City to address several career pathways designed to provide education needed to support airport and airline staffing needs to include drone pilots, airplane repair workers, that's not a good PC thing to say, I don't know, mechanics, and aerospace engineering paths.
For our students?
For our students.
That's wonderful.
And happy summer, everybody. I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Mrs. Brooks?
I hope everyone is enjoying their summer. I know summer school projects are finishing up, and I think it's a wonderful program that we have for our students. And I just want to say bravo, hats off to everyone who's been working really hard this summer, keeping everything going and keeping everyone, you know, on, on the path to success. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hollingsworth?
It's hot outside. Please, I just want our students to take, be safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Stevens?
I think Mr. Hollingsworth is saying it's hot outside, so stay inside where there's AC. Okay. All right. So just wanted to talk about policies and regulations for just a minute. So policies and regulations are developed by experts in the field, whether it's the VDOE, the VSBA, the Virginia Health Department, or the superintendent's cabinet. They're based on current research into best practices for student learning, brain development, using corroborating evidence and legal precedent. Sometimes the best things for kids are not the things that are easy, convenient, accepted, or less controversial. We have to choose the things that are best for our students, for student learning and student success regardless. And we have to base them on facts, not feelings. Real quick, I was going to say something else. I have no idea what it was, because it is only 6:30, and that's pretty quick. While everyone's enjoying summer vacation and our students are enjoying their time off, we have lots of people in each building who are still working. We have folks in central office who are still working, and the plan for the 23-24 school year is well underway. Summer vacation's halfway over. So enjoy the last of it while you can, and if it gets hot, stay inside where it's cool and drink lots of water. But have a wonderful rest of your But have a wonderful rest of your vacation.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I am going to let everybody know that we did have a joint meeting with city council on June 29th. And we're making progress there in our working relationship with them. We talk about things like what our school board priorities are so that they can help us in that way. Also, we're forming a committee to address employee compensation, which is quite important. Also, last week, we, I've been visiting some of the summer school classes and talking to them about what I do as a school board chair and what our school board does for our school community. And I'll be going back tomorrow to witness them having their own city council meetings, so I'm pretty excited about that. Will you be there, Ms. Vazquez Luna? Can't make it this time? Thank you, though. And then also, when we had our joint meeting, we gave, we gave an update on the new dean plans. And we, as a school board, went down to the Tidewater area and visited two schools that were a prototype for the particular plan that we're considering for Genetin. And it is very exciting. I think everyone will be very happy. We'll see how things flush out. And there will be some community meetings coming up where both staff, but also the community, will be able to get information and help give input about what they'd like to see in the new Genetin school. So watch for news on that. And that's all the comments I have for this evening.
Chair, real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt. School Board Member Brezja?
Yes.
Did you ask for a vote on putting on the agenda discussion on creating an advisory committee for grading?
I'm request, I have made the request.
Okay.
But to my reading of our protocols and the, my knowledge of Robert's rules and such, I do not believe a vote is necessary to bring that on.
All right. Just wanted to make sure we handled that and didn't leave it up in the air. Okay.
Well, I will ask for a formal raise of hands. It doesn't have to be a vote. But is there support to have a discussion on the next agenda about an advisory committee to address grading policies? Hands up for support for that.
A discussion is a discussion.
That's right. It's a discussion. Okay, so your hand is raised. Okay, I've got three hands up. I'm sorry, it is not a majority. We can discuss it another time or you can go directly to the policy committee to have a presentation there. But it will not come before the full board for discussion at the next meeting. Yes, ma'am.
It, it needs to go before the policy, before it would come before the board, right?
Yes.
Okay, so then...
Well, the, there are two, there are two. There's one that, yes, the reverting back to the pre-pandemic grading policy, yes. The first proposal is a full board question, which is, do we want to set up an advisory committee to do that? Yes, you know, there's no staff presentation to hear on that. That's only our decision. You know, the seven of us that are up here, or there's six of us today.
I would still think it would go to the committee first.
Why don't we go to committee first?
Yeah.
And then we'll see what comes out of that.
We can put a committee meeting on the calendar.
Yeah.
Which just means I have to talk to you too.
Yeah.
And Alba. We can put a meeting on the calendar.
Thanks for taking care of that.
That way it follows the way we do our order of operations.
All right. If there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Do we need to make a motion?
Oh, Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we adjourn.
I have a motion by Mrs. Spall, seconded by Mrs. Brooks. The school board meeting adjourned. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.